Surprise? That's where we began, just in a moment of silence for, just like to remember a couple people who passed away recently. First one was Barbara Ann Doyle, wife of Richard Doyle, who taught for many, many years here in Newburyport High School. And also, one of our own, William Melantin, former city councilor for about eighteen years. He served the city well. He was, he was probably around in urban renewal, helped save the city with other city leaders like Jack Bradshaw and Byron Matthews. So we just remember William Melantin and Barbara Ann Doyle. Thank you. Thank you. Please, allegiance?
To the flag, the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city council meeting on October 30th, 2017.
Councilor Connell?
Here.
Councilor Cronin?
Present.
Councilor Devlin?
Here.
Councilor Earls?
Present.
Councilor Agaman?
Here.
Councilor Junta?
Present.
Councilor Tontaw?
Present.
Councilor Vogel?
Present.
Councilor Zee?
Present.
Councilor Cameron?
Here.
Council President O'Brien?
Yep.
All present, Mr. President.
Late file items?
There are two, actually three. There is the mayor's update as always, the second is an updated ordinance number eighteen, which is the zoning map, adding four properties. It's still number eighteen, it's just updated. And to go with that is communication one fifteen from the planning director, Andy Port. That includes a map, and it references ordinance number eighteen. There is also on the desk of the councillors, a Ship Street handicap order that was part of the digital packet left out of the paper packet, but it's not a late file. I just mention it for the record.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late file items?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Move on to public comment? Andrew Port?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Andy Port, I'm the Director of Planning and Development. I'm here to address two things in particular. One is, on your council docket or council agenda, you have a couple of zoning items. I'm here to address any questions you have related to those items, whether being taken action on or otherwise. And two, at the mayor's request, just clarify, there's some confusion potentially in the council members' part, just want to make sure you're aware. There's some work that was done on the NRA East lot by the Department of Public Services in what's called Ferry Wharf Way. And there's some confusion over that mainly because the Public Service Department wasn't aware that some of the work they were doing was on NRA property. They are now rectifying that discussion with the NRA, meeting with them next week, and they'll be following up on them next Wednesday evening. But if you have any questions about that, feel free to talk to me or Wayne Amaral from the Department of Public Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Colter John?
Tom Colter John, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. The trust strongly supports and applauds the city council's efforts to improve our zoning, so that what we all hold dear can be preserved. We hope for a positive vote on the second, two readings, from R3 to R2, as well as the inclusionary housing. The trust also strongly supports the High Street residential zoning districts. Its historic streetscape, once ruined, can never be replaced. Please vote in favor of this amendment. Both the extension of R2 from federal to fruit and fear, and the getting rid of the use variance are helpful amendments we would like to see enacted. The co-sponsors of the various zoning amendments are all to be commended. Thank you. This council is doing an outstanding job on zoning. Please keep up the good work, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Sontag?
Bonnie Sontag, 10 Upland Road, Chair of the Newburyport Planning Board. The Planning Board supports the Planning Development Committee's recommendation for adoption of the High Street Ridge Line zoning amendment, because it will protect historic structures and landscapes from inappropriate development, and it will provide continuity of streetscape along significant sections of High Street. Thank you for adopting this amendment that creates two new zoning districts with justifiable use and dimensional restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Stephanie Nikotic, 93 High Street. President O'Brien, I thank the city council for all the actions you have taken and continue to take to finally repair and update zoning. Please pass tonight the ordinances for affordable housing and redistricting of neighborhoods from R3 to R2. Please consider favorably going forward with the amendments to expand that redistricting and to forbid use variances, which will be introduced tonight. And finally, there is a new ordinance which directly improves zoning for my husband and me. Tonight, please vote for the High Street Residential Districts ordinance. We would dearly like this to be enacted. Thank you again.
Paul Kip?
Pam Kip, 11 Tremont Street.
I couldn't read it, sorry.
Oh, it's Pam, that's because my handwriting's bad. Pam Kip, 11 Tremont Street. Thank you. I'd like to echo what Tom, Bonnie, and Stephanie have said, and also urge support for Tremont Street was just added, and that's my street. So if that could be R2 rather than R3, it's a very dense street, so, thank you. Thanks for all your work, really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Karina Maltz?
Hello. Karina Maltz, 15 Summit Place. You should have my materials, an application for an appointment to the Commission on Disabilities. I'm a lifelong special educator. I consider myself an advocate for people with disabilities, particularly children with disabilities and their families. And I would be really honored to have the chance to bring my skills to serve our city. So thank you for your consideration, and don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions.
Thank you. Constance Preston?
Good evening, Constance Preston, 18 Atwood Street. I'm here to answer any questions you may have in, for my reappointment, sorry, as Vice Chairman of the Tree Commission.
Thank you.
The next two speakers are people from Phillips Drive, which I've asked to come. The issue of all the flooding that's been going on there over the years, and I just, it's an issue that during our budget time next year, we might have to make a decision. So I just wanted the two individuals to give you just an update of what's been happening. So I use that as my discretion, if that's okay with everyone else. Richard Goulet?
Thank you, Council President, Ward Councillors, and City-at-Large Councillors. Thank you for having me speak here tonight. I have some talking points that I have prepared, and let me continue. Myself and my neighbors are in need of your help, and here I am this evening. I purchased our home, Richard and Anita Goulet, at 25 Phillips Drive. Purchased our home in 1972 with a finished basement. However, since Cherry Hill Development in 1999, we needed to gut the basement due to water percolating from the basement concrete floor. Today, in order to keep my home safe, I'm encroaching water. I must run a sump pump year-round, 24/7. In order to tie in the Cherry Hill Development sewer line, signs needed to dig a trench from above the Pine Hill Road adjacent to the historical cemetery. My good friend Pat Hale and his wife is there on the corner. Unlike the Phillips Drive neighborhood, which was built in the 1960s, the Cherry Hill Development Cluster Housing have street curbens, proper infrastructure for drainage to handle fifty-seven roofs, garages, driveways, sidewalks, roadways. It would be reasonable deduction that there is greater water management today in the detention pond, which flows into the Phillips Drive neighborhood natural stream. No infrastructure was invested, if you will, to move this water beyond our homes. I took a couple pictures of the detention pond this morning, I'd like to circulate those, and I'll continue to speak.
You only have, you only, the public comment is two minutes, so this isn't a ten-minute presentation, so.
Just a personal note, I arrived here in this great city with Baron Matthews as mayor, and have enjoyed every moment of it, if you will. And I worked at Toll Silversmith for at least some ten years, and got to know some Newburyporters very close at hand. And I educated four daughters from Newburyport High School. And let me just wrap it up here with, personally, I was president of the Belleville Elementary School with Joe Donnelly, and a very effective educator. I was also president of the Band Parents here at Newburyport High School. I was also president of the Newburyport J.C.'s, have been a past member of the Lions Club, was also chairman of the 1972-1973 road race that has really capulated, if you will, to almost over five thousand runners. And when I chaired it, I think maximum might have been three hundred. This is what this great city is all about, and, but I, here again today, I'd like to have your listening here, that we are in need of your help for drainage investment in the Phillips Drive neighborhood. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Phil Cootie?
Thank you, Council O'Brien. For this opportunity to speak before the city council. I live on Phillips Drive, and our water issues have become too difficult for any one homeowner to mitigate. We have distributed to the Honorable Mayor Holliday, Councilor President O'Brien, and other members of the council, and State Representative Jim Kelkhorst, our neighborhood narrative with city and federal documents that we collected on the poor drainage in the Phillips Drive neighborhood, resulting in flooding, safety hazards, personal injury, and property damage. We are thankful that the city has recognized the severity of our problems, and is actively seeking ways to remedy our situation, beginning with clearing out the existing drains, and the follow-through by Mayor Holliday to present proposals to the problem. I want to thank the mayor and each city council member for their empathy and interest in seeking solutions for our ongoing continuous drainage problems. Representative Jim Kelkhorst, Mayor Holliday, Councilor O'Brien, and Councilor Devlin have all come to my home, or met me in person in my role as a community organizer for my neighborhood, and have each said that something must be done to make this better. I know Councilor Cronin has also spent time in the neighborhood. We greatly appreciate the advice, time, and especially the insight into how our local government works, and suggestions on how we can correct this water situation for Phillips Drive. So thank you, everyone, for that. There have been considerable drainage issues in our neighborhood for twenty years or more. The city has now made progress with proposals for drainage solutions. We need to take this the rest of the way to execution. I come before you to request that the council take our water issue up in a committee to ensure that plans are identified, and funds are allocated towards acceptable solutions to each of our water problems. And there are multiple problems with different solutions. Your attention in committee will assist Mayor Holliday and our Ward Councillor Tom O'Brien towards resolution of the longstanding, outstanding drainage issues in our community on Phillips Drive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bill Harris?
Good evening, members of the council. My name's Bill Harris, I live at 56 Lime Street. A brief comment on the master plan and how, I think the master plan and other city plans really need to do a better job showing where public ways are. So Lower Custom House Way, we wouldn't have lost it for so long if it had been shown properly. The city always had rights there. This last two weeks, the city is apparently with, not knowing that they were, when they went on to Ferry Wharf Way, which has to be twenty feet wide, it's owned by the NRA, there's a duty to transfer it to the Waterfront Trust, it's part of the settlement plan the city council ad hoc committee worked on. So they apparently didn't know, and now they've built a seven-foot wide way, which ultimately, if it isn't changed, encourages theft of the thirteen feet that's left by a butters. That's just what happens. And there was a drainage problem, but there's no drain put-in. So we're gonna, unless it's changed, we're gonna have ice troubles and hazard to pedestrians this winter. So these things happen, I know, but we need to get back to, we need better planning documents for everybody, including the Department of Public Services, but also, we need to keep the open process that was going, that the city council did with the ad hoc committee, where everyone participated. So if we've been meeting monthly, they should have come up with the NRA, the Waterfront Trust, the settlers, the city planners, et cetera. So the documents will help if they show more of these ways, but we need the planning process to be more open again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's the public comment, the mayor's comment?
Good evening, Mr. O'Brien, members of the city council, certainly members here, members at home. Last night's storm was, I think, unexpected in terms of the amount of damage that it did across the city. Many trees were down last night due to the high winds, and several landed on primary power lines pulling down telephone poles and transformers. The streets that were most impacted were Turkey Hill, Curzon Mill, Old Ferry, Chapel, and Orange. National Grid is on site to begin removing the trees from the power lines, and the DPS crews will be working through eleven o'clock tonight to remove trees that are blocking these roads as quickly as possible. DPS started very early this morning to remove debris and significant tree damages all across the city. Old Ferry will take a day or two to replace the telephone poles that snapped, but we are safely running the water plant on generator power and with a backup one on site. We do not have a clear timeframe when full power will be restored to the rest of the city, but know that Chief Leclerc, our Emergency Management Director, and our zone liaison with National Grid will continue working closely with National Grid. I would like to express my thanks to Tony Fenari, Wayne Amaral, Chief Leclerc, and the DPS team for the diligent work in responding to this emergency situation. On Friday, October 20th, during halftime of the Newburyport North Reading Football Game, we officially dedicated the Veterans Memorial Plaza. I wanted to thank our Veteran Services Officer, Kevin Hunt, Kyle Hodgson, our Athletic Director for coordinating the dedication, the Newburyport High School band, and to the city councillors and school committee members that participated in this event. The plaza really is a great place to watch a game. Storm Search Group, as you know, they've been an organization that has been working on sea level rise and other climate change issues for many years. We had a preliminary meeting with the representative from Storm Search last week to formally discuss an upcoming Storm Search meeting that they will hold jointly with city staff. Forum is scheduled for December 7th, titled "The Next Big Storm: Preparing Newburyport for Extreme Weather." And the forum will include panels that, panel that will include emergency planning, the city's, review of the city's resiliency plan, public infrastructure, emergency management, mitigation, and safety. The Market Square Drainage Project. As you know, I came before the council a while ago and talked about the completion of a twenty-year bond on our drainage projects, and that we knew we had significant drainage projects across the city. Tilton Street is completed, and we are close to completing Market Square. The Market Square area flooding has caused major, major problems to the small businesses downtown for many, many years. And our DPS designed a solution that is working, however, it was brought to our attention this week that a portion of this work was done on the NRA property without approval. We have been in touch with the NRA, and our intention is to have a meeting with them next week to discuss this further. But the drainage system that was set up appears to be currently working at this juncture. I am happy to report that our free cash was certified last week, general fund at 2.4 million, enterprise fund for water at 1.7, enterprise fund for sewer at 1.1, and the enterprise fund for the Harbor Master, $536,000. Roadwork, as you know, we receive estate allocation from Chapter Ninety, called Chapter Ninety, of approximately 515,000 per year for roads and sidewalks. Mastiot has developed greater restrictions on the use of these funds that require sidewalks and ADA ramps to be completed with each road project. This is very challenging due to the high cost of these projects. However, if we set aside free cash for roadwork, we would have more flexibility. I will be requesting a transfer from free cash to reestablish a line item in the highway operating budget for roadwork that was eliminated many years ago. I would like to suggest $300,000 to this account, but I am open to input from the council regarding this transfer, and of course, additional roads. To date, we have identified several streets that could benefit from this funding. Pheasant Run, Doe, Squires, Willow, Sections of La Valley, and Longfellow. And again, open to other suggestions on roads that don't require sidewalks as well as ADA ramps, and that's what we would use this money for. The Superintendent Search Committee, I'm very pleased we had forty candidates apply to serve on the committee. The committee chair and the school committee representative will be finalizing with me the selection later this week. Neztec is the consultant selected for this contract, we've signed the contract with them. The process is for $14,000, plus we have options for additional costs if we expand our advertising. I am happy to report that the conversion of our LED streetlights has been completed last week, and we anticipate an annual average saving of about $80,000. We've had about six calls regarding wanting more lights or less lights, and so we're trying to work with individual neighbors on their issues regarding those lights. The link is on the DPS website for anyone who has issues or concerns regarding the LED lights, so please check that out. Solarized Newburyport, this is our current round of solarized program that has produced great results. It started several weeks ago. We've had over ninety inquiries, twenty-six solar proposals, and six contracted homes, and sixteen air-source heat pumps, four signed contracts to date. More information on the Solarized Plus program is available on the city website for recycling, energy, and sustainability, and I encourage everyone to take a look at that if you think your home would be eligible. The zoning and master plan, it is encouraging to hear that there has been some movement on the master plan. As I have stated several times, we cannot advance completion of the zoning rewrite until the master plan is finalized. It has been in the city council planning and development committee since last March, and I, again, I am very pleased to see that things are finally moving forward with that completion of that. I certainly, as many people have said tonight, appreciate the movement the city council has made on the introduction and passage of some important measures, ordinance measures as intra-measures, inclusionary zoning, protection of the High Street homes and ridge, and which of course is one of the primary functions of this legislative body, to pass laws. Thank you very much. Please move forward on the master plan so we can get that to completion, and we can begin to finalize zoning. A couple other things I did not have a chance to include in your update, the garage intermodal facility delivery date, the A&R Plan, deed language and escrow transfer is scheduled for November 6th. I had mentioned several weeks ago the fact that we are investigating a new plan to help seniors with a reduction of ten percent of their property, on their property taxes. It's referred to as 41(c) and a half, and it would be for seniors over sixty-five who've lived in their homes and own their home for over ten years. So we have contacted DOR and Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, and in order to expedite this process, otherwise we'd have to wait till our next municipal election in two years, because we are a city, it has to be by a ballot vote. And I don't think our seniors can wait two years for some property tax relief. So we are, Ethan Manning is putting together a home rule petition, that's the way we have to do this process, for you. That will come for your first reading at your next meeting, and that will go to the State House to ask that, to be granted permission to hold a special election, hopefully this spring, so that we can move this process forward to give our seniors a little more tax relief. Thank you.
Mayor, I appreciate the updates, but particularly on the LED conversions, I'd like to direct your attention to Quill Street. There's one light there, and it needs shielding. I mentioned this to Molly Ettenborough, if you could get the city electrician there.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Those are the kinds of things we need to know about, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, could you give me an idea of the timeframe for the superintendent's search?
I'll know more after the consultant team is coming with a plan, a timeline for us on our Monday night, November 6th, school committee. They'll be spending about an hour, an hour and a half with the school committee going through the process, giving us a, you know, profile of what we're looking for with the next superintendent, as well as timelines. I'll have more information for you after that meeting.
Thank you. Councilor Earls, go ahead.
Help me through this a little bit with the roadwork. I'm just getting a little confused. We're, we're looking for a transfer for $300,000 to be used on the streets that illicit, Pheasant Run, Doe, Squires, because they do not, they will not require ADA?
They don't have sidewalks.
So, but if we used the 515, they don't have sidewalks, we'd be okay using, you know, we don't have it yet, but, so we'd be okay using that, because we wouldn't be beholden to using?
Correct.
All right, that's all, thank you.
Councilor Zee?
On the intermodal, mayor, has it gone to bid?
Oh yes, I had mentioned that in my last update. The bids will be coming in November 15th.
They will?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilor Devlin?
Have we gotten Bond Council's opinion on the validity of our bond order for the garage? Wasn't there a hang-up on the MVRTA operating agreements? The Bond Council wanted a copy of that?
We're fine.
Have we submitted the operating agreement?
No, we have a lease agreement, but they're fine. They, they have a sort of an outline of what that will look like, and there's no further issues with Bond Council on that.
So has Bond Council certified our, our bond order?
I don't think it's certified just yet, but we are, have given them all the information, and they're satisfied with what they have to date, but we haven't received the certification yet.
When do we expect to receive that?
I don't have the exact date, but it should be soon. I will let you know.
Can you get that for me?
Sure, absolutely.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yes.
And if we gave them an outline, could, could we maybe get a copy of the outline of the operating agreement?
Yeah, I'm planning on giving you the full one, because we're in the process of developing it with the RTA, rather than just the outline. It should be ready in a couple weeks.
Okay, but I, I would appreciate getting whatever Bond Council got.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on, consent agenda? The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of minutes for the October 10th meeting. There are no transfers. There are two communications. First one is communication 113, which is the Harvest Side Half Marathon for November 19th this year, to go to public safety. Second is communication 114, which are A-frame requests by Metzies Cantina, that's to go to license and permits. There are the following appointments. First appointment number 63, Karina Maltz, 15 Summit Place to Disabilities Committee, Commission, excuse me, until 11:30 2020. Next is Lisa Rowan, 17 Boardman Street, same commission, until 11:01 2020. Appointment number 65, Keith Cotter, 13 Monarch Way, Kingston, New Hampshire, as a special police officer. Following, two reappointments. Appointment 66, Crispin Miller, 1 Parker Ridge Way, to the Tree Committee until 11:01 2020. An appointment- And Appointment 67, Constance Preston, 18 Atwood Street, to the Tree Committee until 11:30, 2020. And that's the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? That's the end of it. Consent agenda will move on to the regular agenda. Motion to mayor's update?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, thank you. You go to Communications 115, is that the next one?
Communication 118, which is the late-file submitted by the planning director. That is a memo from Andrew Fort, City Council, regarding three proposed zoning amendments.
I have 115, not 118.
You do.
115.
Let's see, appointment? Yeah. Right? Is that what I heard?
I'm sorry, it is 115. I just, scribbler's error, we'll call it. Same document from Andy Fort, City Council, three proposed zoning amendments, ordinance 12, 13, and 18, off-street parking regulations, high-street residential districts, and zoning map, R3 to R2, expanded, 10:30, 2017. It's a three-page memo with some attachments and a map.
To refer to planning and development?
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Next would be the appointment, second reading. Correct?
Yeah.
Second reading, Harrison Lowell Whitney Jr., 23 Low Street, Newbury, as a special police officer, appointment number 62.
Motion to approve. For second?
Second.
Roll call.
This is for the appointment Harrison Whitney, Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Cronin?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Earls?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Junta?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Move on to orders?
Orders. First order is number 56. It's a licensed contractor application, Swayze Alexander, 14 Graff Road, Suite 3, Newbury Port, submitted, Councillor Agaman.
Motion to refer to public utilities.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Next order is Order 57. It's a Parks Gift. I should read it, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Sets with gratitude, a gift from Richard A. Eaton Charitable Foundation, Inc., in the amount of $25,220.50, and a gift from Wheel of Braid of Fry in the amount of $2,000 for the purpose of rehabilitating and constructing the Richard A. Eaton Baseball Field, located behind the Knock-Moan Upper Elementary School, and appropriate set funds to the Knock-Moan Athletic Fields Project in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53A, submitted, Councillor Tontar.
Motion to refer to budget and finance. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Next order is a stop, I'm sorry, it's a handicap space to be located at 24 Ship Street until June 30, 2019, amending Section 13-179, submitted, Councillor Zee.
I'd like to make a motion for an emergency preamble to take this up this evening, please.
Second.
And I'd like to speak to it, Mr. President, on the emergency. This is a handicap request from a resident on Ship Street. I've been out there with DPS already. We looked at it. We determined where a sign would go. I did also meet with the resident, and I think it'd be a hardship for the gentleman to come in to apply for a temporary, which could normally get us to our next, through our next meeting for a committee. So with the council's indulgence, I've scoped it out. There's already another handicap spot just in front of it. I think it would be appreciated if we could, you know, handle this this evening. So I ask for your support on that, and of course, on the final order itself as well. Thank you.
Coach Connell?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just a point of inquiry, and I think this is, I'm sure this is a worthwhile item, and I plan to vote in favor of it, but I'd like to ask the clerk, if we have in place now a system to follow up on the number of handicapped spaces that we've created so that as people move out or their circumstances change, we can put some of these spaces back into general use?
I could, Mr. President. That's actually why any request for a handicap spot that's come in recently has an expiration date. For example, this one's June 30, 2019. Because we did have that, we would, the council would vote in a space, and the person might be there for a month or six weeks, and then gone, and the sign is up permanently. So I think it's much more manageable now.
So it is being monitored so that we can?
Yes, Tony and I talk about it. I don't think we have any outstanding situation right now. We had one on Strong Street. That sign came down.
Good, thank you.
As far as I know.
So the preamble?
I would like to ask the clerk to smith something for me, but whereas an emergency exists, that it would be a hardship for the resident to arrive and apply for a temporary before our next council meeting.
Second. Just according to Section 29B.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Roll call?
Needing two-thirds, Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Cronin?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Earls?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Junta?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor President O'Brien?
Yes.
The motion for emergency preamble passes. The order's?
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Motion approved. Order number 58, Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Cronin?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Earls?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Junta?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Move on to ordinances. First, ordinance is, ordinance 10.
Ordinance 10 would be a second reading zoning map, known as R3 to R2. It is dated July 25, 2017, entitled "Zoning Map Change Dash Proposed," parentheses, "Corrected," closed parentheses, submitted jointly, Councillors Cronin, Zee, and Tontar.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Second reading, Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Cronin?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Earls?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Junta?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor President O'Brien?
Yes.
If I might, Mr. President, who is the first and second on that?
First. With Councillor Tontar, were you second?
Perfect, thank you.
Ordinance 11, second reading.
Ordinance 11, second reading, is inclusionary affordable housing ordinance. It is six pages, has not changed from the first reading. It is jointly submitted, Councillors Cronin and Agaman.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Cronin?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Earls?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Junta?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Move on to ordinances. First, ordinance is, ordinance 10.
Ordinance 10 would be a second reading zoning map, known as R3 to R2. It is dated July 25, 2017, entitled "Zoning Map Change Dash Proposed," parentheses, corrected, closed parentheses, submitted jointly, Councillors Cronin, Zee, and Tontar.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Second reading, Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Cronin?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Earls?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Junta?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Move on to ordinances.
Ordinance 17. First time the council has seen it, submitted by Councillor Agaman. It is a zoning ordinance to the city, amending 10H, 6A. There are, I think the language of import is that we're striking the word "including" and we're adding expressly excluding any use variance notwithstanding anything in this ordinance to the contrary, and it is to the powers of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Motion to refer to planning and development?
Second. Discussion? Coach Zeke?
Just in case for posting, would you accept committee of the whole as a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we remove Communication number 90?
Second.
From committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. And that is pertaining to what?
Communication 90 is a letter described as a letter regarding the parking garage. It is from Dr. Mahmood, and it's dated July 12, 2017.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead, next.
Mr. President, I move that we remove from committee ordinance C014 regarding smoking in municipal facilities.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, the, motion to approve. Second. Go ahead, Councillor Connell.
Thank you. The committee was torn on this and voted two to nothing, two members being present. We determined that, well, we had different opinions and thought that it would be best served if we offered no recommendation and threw it before the council for your disposition. What this particular ordinance proposal does is to restrict smoking in playground areas where there are children in public places. It identifies a couple of playgrounds. There are others that are under development. I suspect when Cashman Park is completed, the water park's down there, that may also be added to the list if it is in fact completed. But we thought it was worthy of discussion and look forward to hearing what you have to think about it, have to say about it.
Coach Agaman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I drafted and proposed this ordinance after an inquiry from actual State Senator Ives, who's a resident of Ward 2 and has a small child. I think it speaks for itself. It's modeled on similar ordinances in other cities. It's deliberate on my part that I only included these two areas, the In Street Playground and the In Street Fountain, because they're the only two, in my word, where I've gotten complaints. Also, anecdotally, I can confirm myself that because of the number of restaurants in the area, oftentimes, there are people on break who may be barbacks or waiters and waitresses, and, you know, they tend to gravitate away from their business to smoke or vape or whatever they're doing. And finally, the distance that I selected, some suggested, well, you should make it 100 feet, but that would be nowhere in In Street. So the 10 feet is a number that I feel is appropriate. I think it's something that, you know, general common sense applies. That should do it. I hope you will support it. There's no ulterior motive to widen this to any other areas. I only, I only have these two in mind.
Just for the record, this is a Section 8-1 Amendment A, smoking prohibited. No person shall smoke within 10 feet of any portion of the In Street Playground. And two, 10 feet of any portion of the In Street Fountain, and they're referenced by parcel numbers. B is, there must be a posted notice of the prohibition, no smoking, with a no-smoking symbol. And three, violations and penalties, essentially a $100 fine each day will be considered a separate offense.
Coach Zee?
I'm in support of this. I just have a practical question. So upon passage, is it the Parks Commission that then holds the responsibility to place a sign for these? In B, it says posting notice of prohibition, every board commissioner officer. Is that the process by which a no-smoking sign will go up? Or how, and as a sign, as a perennial sign person, that seem to get tagged on all those ones, you know, how can we do it in an aesthetically pleasing way so we don't go backwards on some things and forward on others?
Coach Agaman?
Yes, I mean, we, when we transferred jurisdiction to the Parks Commission, I think that was the understanding, is that they would handle things like signs. But as a practical matter, I think what we've learned is the city's still small enough, everybody talks to everybody, and they'll probably get DPS to do it. So, you know, we should probably just check in with Wayne, and I will, I will. As far as enforcement, by the way, I thought that's where you're headed. That's at the very bottom. So police officers, health department can also enforce Frank Chacaloni or whoever they designate, just so you know.
Coach Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. The question, if I may, to the sponsoring councillor, how do you define the boundaries? You know, what, 10 feet from where?
Yeah, okay, so any portion of the playground, if you think, well, where's the playground? Again, I was trying to be commonsensical. I think there's an understanding because there, you know, it used to be the sand pit, but now it's got that rubber mat, and then it has a border of dirt, really. It used to have shrubs, but not anymore. So, and sure enough, map 004, map 002 matches that exactly. So you're right on. The fountain's tougher because the fountain is not its own parcel.
I think it speaks for itself. It's modeled on similar ordinances in other cities. It's deliberate on my part that I only included these two areas, the In Street Playground and the In Street Fountain, because they're the only two, in my ward, where I've gotten complaints. Also, anecdotally, I can confirm myself that because of the number of restaurants in the area, oftentimes there are people on break who may be barbacks or waiters and waitresses, and, you know, they tend to gravitate away from their business to smoke or vape or whatever they're doing. And finally, the distance that I selected, some suggested, well, you should make it 100 feet, but that would be nowhere in In Street. So the 10 feet is a number that I feel is appropriate. I think it's something that, you know, general common sense applies. That should do it. I hope you will support it. There's no ulterior motive to widen this to any other areas. I only had these two in mind.
Just for the record, this is Section 8-1 Amendment A, smoking prohibited. No person shall smoke within 10 feet of any portion of the In Street Playground. And 2, 10 feet of any portion of the In Street Fountain, and they're referenced by parcel numbers. B is there must be a posted notice of the prohibition, no smoking, with a no-smoking symbol. And 3, violations and penalties, essentially $100 fine each day will be considered a separate offense.
Counsel Z?
I'm in support of this. I just have a practical question. So upon passage, is it the Parks Commission that then holds the responsibility to place a sign for these? In B, it says posting notice of prohibition, every board commissioner officer. Is that the process by which a no-smoking sign will go up? Or how many, and as a sign, as a perennial sign person, that seem to get tagged on all those ones? You know, how can we do it in an aesthetically pleasing way so we don't go backwards on some things and forward on others?
Counsel Argument?
Yes, I mean, when we transferred jurisdiction to the Parks Commission, I think that was the understanding, is that they would handle things like signs. But as a practical matter, I think what we've learned is the city's still small enough. Everybody talks to everybody, and they'll probably get DPS to do it. So, you know, we should probably just check in with Wayne, and I will. I will. As far as enforcement, by the way, I thought that's where you were headed. That's at the very bottom. So police officers, health department can also enforce Frank Giacalone or whoever they designate, just so you know.
Counsel Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. The question, if I may, to the sponsoring counselor. How do you define the boundaries? You know, 10 feet from where?
Yeah, okay. So any portion of the playground, if you think, well, where's the playground? Again, I was trying to be commonsensical. I think there's an understanding because there, you know, it used to be the sand pit, but now it's got that rubber mat, and then it has a border of dirt, really. It used to have shrubs, but not anymore. So, and sure enough, map 004, map 002 matches that exactly. So you're right on. The fountain's tougher because the fountain is not its own parcel. It's a portion of, a much larger parcel. But again, you know, 10 feet, if I'm a cop or a health inspector, you know, I can say, can you get 10 feet away from one of the granite blocks, please? I think that would be the logical extent of the fountain.
Thank you.
Further discussion, Counsel Tanta?
I support this, although I'm curious. The chair said that there was disagreement within the committee.
There was lack of consensus.
Could we hear some clarification? I mean, I'm just curious, quite frankly. I'd like to hear who's arguing against this and why?
My lips are sealed. No, but in reality, we just thought that this required a fuller discussion than just two counselors saying, yes, go forward with this. And that was our intention, to put it before the full council, because we thought it had a more general application and therefore required a more general discussion without being prejudiced by the two of us who were there at the time. That's all.
I'm number two, so I was the other person. I don't think there was any disagreement on the content. We just debated whether, and the sponsoring counselor spoke to it briefly, is this the only one that we wanted to consider? That was really where we just, now we're going into many wards and many places, and then we didn't want it to get out of control in committee, so we wanted to bring it. But I'm in general agreement that we could start here and then see where it takes us.
Thank you.
That helps.
Blindly, if this is parenthetical perhaps, you're asking the same questions here that we kind of talked through a little bit. And I do want to point out that all of the school properties, although those have parks associated with them, they are all off-limits to smokers by virtue of the fact that you can't smoke on any of the school campuses. So if that's in the back of someone's mind, let's set it aside and focus on the proposal at hand.
Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
For the ordinance, excuse me.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien?
Yes.
First reading.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove Ordinance Number 13, zoning High Street residential districts.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, I'm going to take a powder on this one, too.
Is it 13 you said?
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Thank you. And, you know, we apologize for a lot of paper here. There were some changes to this that you have, and I'm happy to help walk us through all of that. I know many of you were at the joint hearing that we had with the Planning Board on October 18th. Counselor Agarman was the original drafter, and he's recused himself since he is in this potential zone. So I was an original cosponsor, and Counselor Connell is also now a cosponsor, which is why you may see different sponsors on some of these different versions. So the, and I'll kind of walk through the chronology of how it started and how it got to where it's at right now. So the original purpose of this is really to preserve the character of High Street, and this is seen on the now larger, one of the larger maps here, the one I think you have on top. And there are two residential districts. There's High Street A on the right, which is on the, to the east end of High Street, and then High Street B, Version 2. This was modified a little based on some joint hearing input. That's outlined in black. That's on the left or west side of High Street, that end of High Street. And both of these are on the south side. If you aren't looking at this map, I'm sure it's online. For those of you at home or in the audience, so this may be a little confusing, but I'll try to describe it. So the original intent is really just to do that preservation of that ridge line. We heard from public comment earlier here tonight about the importance of this. And I think it does give a very, you know, it's more quantified. It's less subjective than other attempts really to preserve the historic character of that street. And as we know, it really is one of, you know, we often say Market Street's the jewel of Newburyport, or the waterfront's the jewel of, and we're lucky we have a lot of jewels, and High Street is definitely one of them. So this keeps the lot sizes the way they are so that there's not, you know, infill development behind lot, behind existing structures, and there's not infill in front of existing structures. It has increased frontage that's defined, so people can't chop them up from the front. You know, some people cited, I think it's Toomey Drive, which is off of High Street, is a place that might not have happened if we had this in place. As you heard, the Planning Board was unanimously in favor of this, and we had good public comment from them. And that night, Tom Colterjohn spoke about it that night, Mark Bilado, who's a resident of High Street, Mark Sedran, Reg Bacon, who actually lives on Strong Street but who's been involved in historic preservation, and Mary Haslinger talked about her house at 299 High Street. You know, those of you who know Mary, you know how deeply she cares about this. Her home is 265 years old, and she made known that the way they built them back then was with really strong oak, and so if any truck comes down on High Street, she doesn't feel it, and everyone else does, anybody that's constructed in the last 100 years. So, and Stephanie Nikatek's letter was written, was read by Rita Mahalek that night. So we had a lot of discussion just to try to clarify the left side, the High Street Residential B. The map was a little tighter than, but this kind of clarifies the spaces in between. And we did take some changes to clarify the language around the definitions, and you've got a redline version of this that was given out earlier. And, you know, these are certainly, it helps clarify it in terms of the simpler definitions of front yard setback, and there's a revised text in there, and also a diagram that we think is going to make it a little easier to understand in terms of, you know, for future people to interpret this. And we also, we removed references to individual parcels because there was a lot of language in there that was a little bit confusing, but the map will be referenced in the zoning. I don't, I'm not quite clear if the map actually becomes part of the zoning. Okay, it does. So this should be really clear for future interpreters.
President?
Yes.
Are you referring to zoning map change proposed V.2?
Correct.
Okay, just for the record, and that's going to go with Ordinance Number 13?
Yes.
Which I take at this point is cosponsored by you and Counselor Connell?
Correct.
Not Agarman? Okay.
Correct. And so that's sort of my quick synopsis of this. I don't know how quick that was. So we had a number of counselors, as it was a committee of the whole, that were also there, but it was Counselor Connell and myself, and we voted two to zero in favor, and welcome any questions or comments.
That's Number 13, right?
Yes, 13.
I just wanted to rise in support of this, and I wanted to point out a couple things and one question. First of all, I'm appreciative of the sponsors and the authors' efforts. One thing I like about it is the analytical approach that was taken towards the setback. So I know there was data that was calculated to basically figure out what the prevailing conditions were, and then to use that to back into what they should be. And this is something that I spoke about briefly last time when we did the first vote on the R3, R2. This is the direction I think we need to be heading in general. Figure out what's there, figure out what we want it to be, and then try and get into, getting into the numbers. So that is definitely in my wheelhouse. So that's the first comment I'd like to make. The second is, the second thing I like about it is, one of the things I felt has been fairly broken with our zoning is different setback and dimensional requirements for different uses in the same zone. So what I like about this is that the single-family and the two-family have the same dimensional controls because they're in the same zone. So it never made common sense to me that if you were building a two-family, you'd fit in, you could use these rules, and if you were building a single-family on the same lot, you could use these rules. Perhaps it had more applicability when this was written, maybe 40 years ago now. But I like that there's, trying to get to a little bit more simplicity, I think, and a little more homogeneity, which creates more predictability. So I like that. My only question is on, I guess it's footnote M, which is basically something about, I read it in the original in the packet. Obviously, I'm looking at this one tonight because I just got it. But M is on the front setback. So can somebody just explain what this means? And it seems to me that it's a, it's a good thing in that it allows for some flexibility if the prevailing conditions on the block are different for the front. But I can't get through this just right this second. You can help, Andy.
Sure. Yeah, and actually, if you look at the redline strike through on page 1 of 5 of that draft, and this version here that was on the counselor's desk this evening is the markup version that the Planning Board had recommended some changes to. So what was recommended here is actually, believe it or not, some simpler language than what was originally in the draft. Previously, if you tried to read that paragraph previously, you'd probably have trouble, as our, both myself and our new zoning enforcement officer would have trouble applying it. So with this new section here and the diagram, we thought we can always adjust these things going forward, but we find diagrams to be helpful. The purpose of that diagram is to illustrate this. So effectively, what happens here is on a given street, in this case, High Street, you would have, this is, there's a similar provision in our ordinance right now, actually, that affects the rest of the city as a whole. And the intent here is to mimic that section, but to call out, say, a longer distance, if you will, along the street. So effectively, if you're looking at homes, I think the easiest way to visualize that is actually in the High Street Residential A District, which is the blue area on the east side. A lot of those homes are setback from the street. So ideally, you'd want the new home, if there was a new home or new structure being built, being consistent with that setback from the street, certainly not any closer to the street. So what this effectively does is allow people to look at an area 200 feet from the applicable structure in each direction, look at those structures, and basically come up with something that is consistent with that. They can't come any closer than the setback that is allowed by that lining, if you will. So that's the end result essentially, is that you have a structure that isn't any closer to the street than the historical patterns along that streetscape.
So this is essentially for the few cases where there's an outlier, essentially?
Correct.
So like in your drawing here, number seven is obviously the outlier because it's setback, whereas, so you're trying to mimic what the prevailing conditions are?
Right. So there's a sentence in there that deals with, if a structure is further than halfway back on a given lot to the rear of that lot, you would not include that structure because it might be so far of an outlier that you wouldn't want to use it as an example. We, this is, just like any other zoning provision, it's something you want to modify over time and improve. But the idea here is to start off with something that at least guarantees you're not going to have any structures that come close to the street than the structures that are already there.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I might, just for the record, just so I'm clear and everyone listening is clear, we're not approving the one in the committee item in the packet. We're approving the one that's redlined that came in to replace that, if you will. And that's the one that's coming out of committee. And that is referencing, as I mentioned before, that Version 2 map that you've submitted, and it also has made whatever changes are in red.
Correct.
Perhaps I should modify the motion to approve as amended.
I think that's a good idea.
Second.
So it's the one that was in the late, the late, the packet that was?
And dated September 11th, maybe?
At the bottom of it, it's dated October, it's dated September 11th, but the notes at the bottom are October 18th.
The footer.
Footer.
Just for clarification, that's the date that the Planning Board had their public hearing?
With us, yeah, right. And these were things we went over thoroughly that night.
Yep. Further discussion?
I had the opportunity to walk the portion of this from Toppin's Lane to North Atkinson. It was a little disturbing that when I talked to the people there, most, no one was aware that we were doing this. And we are under no statutory obligation to make them aware of it. So I told them about it. Everyone I had the opportunity to speak to favored it and favored it strongly. But, you know, I just wish we had an opportunity to talk to people about this. Again, it's in the newspaper. It's publicly, you know, pronounced. Everyone knew it could have gone to the hearing, but it just, the word just didn't get out there. So, but there's support for it.
Just to say, so, you know, obviously, there's two readings. It gets published. I don't know, you know, the Daily News is in attendance. I'm sure there'll be some discussion of it. And, yeah, no, I think it would be good for, obviously, we want people to know what we're doing, and I'm sure we'll hear from some people.
Anything else? Counsel Connell?
Just one, I think before we conclude our discussion, it looks like we're moving toward a vote. I want to acknowledge the work of the original sponsor, who has recused himself on this, and the support of the Historic Trust and the residents who were directly affected by this, every one of whom I spoke to either in a meeting here or at their doors, said this is a good idea. I know it does, it changes the circumstances of my property ownership, but I think it's a good change. It's protective, and it says something about their commitment to maintaining that important streetscape that we all refer to as one of the jewels.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Votes?
First reading, we need a?
Okay.
Roll call, approve as amended. Ordinance as referenced. Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman? Is recused, I'm sorry. Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Questions? One recused, first reading, motion passes.
Counsel Agarman, we'll tell you later what happened.
You won't like it.
Mr. President, just a couple, there's nothing more coming out of committee. Our committee is going to need to look at the parking zoning amendment a little bit. We had, I think, a very productive meeting with the Planning Board. They had a couple of ideas, and I think we need to kind of weigh that. I do want to mention one other thing. Complete streets, this was jointly referred to Planning and Development and Public Utilities back in April. Counselor Connell was the sponsor of it. A couple of weeks ago, I had a conversation with Director Port about it. I was trying to understand a little bit more about procedurally how this works, and it's a new, relatively new initiative in Massachusetts. So I wasn't quite clear of it. He suggested I meet with the Highway Department. And I was going to do that, then I realized it was also jointly with Public Utilities, and I thought, well, I should invite Counsel Agarman to that. And then I thought Counsel Agarman's also on Planning and Development. That would be a quorum of Planning and Development. So then I opened it up to a public meeting. But we are having a meeting tomorrow at 8 o'clock of the two committees. It's really going to focus on procedural stuff. We're hopeful to set up a meeting where we can get much more public input, probably shortly after the election and Halloween and all of that, and we'll let people know when that date's going to be.
Hold on a second.
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove Communication 95.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. No? All in favor?
Aye.
Votes? Go ahead. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President. Bear with me for one second. Motion to remove Order 54.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved?
Second.
Discussion? Have to read it first, what it is.
To stop into section at Marlborough Street and High Street. Ordinance 54, submitted 10/10/17.
So this is in my ward. This was by request of the neighbors. There is no stop sign there. I know the council president asked if there had been one. Maybe there was, but it was never codified. I did search our Muni code, and it's not in there. So I couldn't just ask for a new sign to be put up in the case of one missing. So appreciate your consideration for this, and hopefully people will stop. Thank you.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
All in favor?
Aye.
Votes? Anything else?
Yes, motion to remove Ordinance 16.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is just a small update to the special events ordinance that we worked on during this session. And if you've read it, it's a fairly short edition on the third page, and it refers to ADA compliance. Certainly, this is not really creating anything new in that ADA compliance was always a requirement, but I know that I received a few complaints from residents of my ward who were attending events in the downtown, considerations for mobility and, you know, wheelchair access and parking in some of the lots. So I just thought it was a good opportunity to take a quick moment just to kind of, sort of, add a little bit of extra juice in there to make sure that we are saying that it's important to us and it means something. We hope that, you know, as we continue to work out things with events, that this is one of the things that can be considered as they get approved and then get implemented in the city. Thank you. in the city. Thank you.
This an order or an ordinance?
Ordinance.
Says order.
Doesn't?
Or durd.
An ordinance.
An order.
Yep. Counsel Devlin?
I was one of the cosponsors of this dramatic change, but it has a profound effect, and I'll make it very clear with one illustration. There were porta-potties on the handicap parking, in the parking lots on the waterfront during Riverfest, and we received lots of complaints about that and pictures. And so although this is being handled lighthearted, it was not taken, so people were upset about that. So that's got to be taken into consideration. It's part of the resident expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. Those is an order or an ordinance? It says order, supposed to be ordinance, correct?
Correct. And I think what the president's referring to is, it's referenced as an ordinance number 16, but the first line on page one, it says an order relating to the updating event rules. Would it be all right with the council if I change that to ordinance?
Yes. So we'll make a motion to approve as amended, then?
Correct.
Roll call?
Roll call. Again, for the record, this is a ordinance amending Section 1397, road races, walkathons, bicycles, and I think to the counselor's point, subsection 13, which is under D, which is ADA Act, is the primary change. Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien?
Yes.
Passes first reading.
Anything else? That's it. Go to the order.
Their executive session? I don't think so. Yes. It's a tabled, Mr. President. But I think under our rules, it needs to be acted upon and can be removed from the table and put back or whatever. Motion removed from the table?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to place back on the table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make the motion to adjourn?
Move back in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fan, the Patriots just traded Jimmy G.